Are you ready to record?
I think we're rolling.
Yeah, it's already recording.
Okay, let's call this meeting a software planning permission order. Everyone, during the pleasure of reading. What delay to release through the flag? To the re- following. To the regions. Under guidance.
Under guidance. Under the. The world's. The world's justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah. Good God.
Holy cow.
Okay, so if everyone is virtual, do you just state your name prior to asking a question so I can know that you're there so I can make sure that you have the floor of product and people in the room? Okay, guys?
And I got this one on.
That will be helpful for tonight. We just wait. Pleasantly, just seeing all tenants, let's see, I'm here. We don't see anyone there. I guess we don't see anybody. Okay. All right.
Can you guys tell us who's in the room?
Sure. Ron Conti's here, Larry's here, Greg's here, Bob Harrison, Alex, myself, Richard, Hugh Sullivan, Mark Landcore, and.
Ron Wolf.
Ron Wolf.
Carmen Andrews.
Harmon's here. Nancy's out there.
Tom Evans.
And Debbie and the rest of the folks from the team are here as well.
Happy New Year.
So unfinished business, continuation for Lumlot Woods, nine lots of woods located in Lumlot Road. You want to preface yourself?
That's right, I was not here for the.
There it is. No, is it? It's over.
It was first presented.
And then it says, press computer one with the materials.
There wasn't really a full presentation, it was only an overview, right? We only did a fast overview.
I think we gave you a preliminary.
But I can see Greg, I can see Greg if you want me to, if it makes sense to you.
I think that makes.
Okay, Greg will see you, and Alex will just sit.
Yes.
Okay, okay, we'll change it then.
Great.
Thank you. Greg's gonna sit in for Alex on this one.
Good evening, Ron Wolf, professional engineer, representative.
I'm out again.
Owner now. Okay, Kevin Starcheck is appearing. Property is located on the east side of Lumlot Road. Lumlot Road is situated at the bottom of the map and essentially runs north-south. Property has an area of thirty to half acres. And the existing house situated in the southwest corner. There's a street number of fourteen Lumlot Roads. There's quite a lot on the property, it was going to be by the air.
Six seconds.
And the property, for the most part, is essentially wooded, with the exception of some lawn area around the house. There's a water course heading in through the property, closed from the south to the north. It's essentially in this yellow area here, it's shaded on the map.
It's like it's loose or something every time you shake.
There's advocates proposing nine lots, eighteen lots, plus the existing house lot, makes nine. And two of the lots will have, supposed to have a common driveway, lot six and seven. All the rest of the lots will have their own driveway. Lot two is an interior lot, which will have its own driveway also. We have a fire system proposed, which was reviewed by the fire marshal. And the public works director has also reviewed the plans. Received approval from the wetlands commission, I believe that was back in November. And also approved from the health department for the onsite that system involved. Please repeat this meeting, I think the revisions we've made to the plan include the addition of this conservation easement that runs through the whole center of the property. That is five point six acres, which is huge, you know. We have the open space that was always proposed in the northeast corner, that's six point five acres. Brings the total protected area up to twelve point one two acres, or thirty one point four percent of the property. One other thing that we did, that was requested at the last meeting, was we surveyed the location of the significant trees on the property and added those to the site plan. That's how it is. I've been answering the questions. We provided, I think, two extension letters as requested by the land here staff. And we, Gail and Tiger were with us to discuss any questions about any available space matters if necessary. I think she's online. Nancy is ready to have technical questions.
Okay. We will go to the virtual first. Anyone, Nancy or Harmon or Gail, if you're out there, is there any questions for anyone?
Hi, no, this is. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I don't have any questions, Carmen Andrews.
Nancy, do you have anything?
Yes, Nancy Clark.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Um, there was, yes, there was a question about the grade of the driveway for lot six, the driveway. Did we get that answered?
Should I answer that?
Yes, please.
The grade for the driveway varies, it's a maximum of twelve percent on the easterly section.
Resolution for it, is it the one I have on my computer?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll read it at the end, that's fine.
We did also, one other thing that we did, the revision to the, through the wetland department process, was we had previously had proposed pull-off areas for emergency service vehicles on the common driveway section of the driveway, which is fifteen feet wide. And we requested that we could eliminate those.
Are we taking a boat on tonight?
This one?
Are we taking a boat on tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, or not, okay.
We should, yeah.
With you and approved by both the fire marshal and the public works director. So we eliminated the pull-off area at the section of the common driveway. Between Lumlot Road and driveway turnoff.
Thank you. Anyone else on the commission, any questions?
Did we get specs on the, I'm sorry, the bridge or arch culvert? Did we get specs on that and were they approved?
Yeah, we've always had the specs included on the plan for the arch culvert. I brought just a picture of a similar one, this one's larger than what we're proposing, but the specs for our structure are included, with the drawings. It's an alumina, alumina structure similar to this, it's an arch culvert, and it has a footing on each side, so we're completely standing the water course.
Do we have a picture of that for them to see, or no?
I'll email it to them.
I don't have.
We have a picture over here, Nancy, you can't see it, so we'll.
We don't have that. I don't have it. Yeah. My last question is, one of our commission members questioned about the stone walls, and the answer from the applicant reflected in our minutes says that he thought that most of the stone walls were in wetlands, and so that's not a definitive answer, are there any not in, in wetlands that will be preserved?
Well, really not, with the exception of, there's very few stone walls that were disturbing. We located stone walls on the property, they're mostly around the perimeter on the property line, a few on the south end of the property. We don't have any activity proposed for those locations. There really isn't any stone wall along the street line that we're even disturbing for the driveways. So I hope that answers your question, but the majority of stone walls are all around the perimeter of the property on the easterly side.
Bob, that was your concern, right?
So is your answer that the only place will be disturbed is where the driveways come in?
There's really not much stone wall along, there's just some stone wall remains, not any really significant stone walls along the street line. But throughout the property, there's a few stone walls, mostly along the southern part of the property, where we don't have any activity proposed or any house sites proposed. More specifically on lot six, I don't know if you can see the map, or if you have the map, I'm pointing through.
Yeah.
I think it was Bob Harrison who was concerned with that, are you satisfied, Bob?
Yeah, Bob, are you good with that, or?
Yeah, I think it's, I think we're all set here.
That's all I have.
Anyone else on the commission?
Ron?
Sure.
On the judge, I'm sorry, that's difficult to see.
I got a bigger scale depending on which.
Something about the driveway.
Okay.
You say it's, it's, what's the?
The grades?
Grade here.
This is the steepest part here, it's about, it's twelve percent, which is the maximum operating next to the river.
That's a big grade.
Um, it's not too bad, twelve percent sometimes allow fifteen, twelve percent is a reasonable grade. This tape, this area nears to some areas that just wanted to.
No, if the common driveway applies to this property, this property, can this property apply?
No, just two lots, six and seven, lot eight has its own driveway.
Oh, you're saying, I thought it was coming out.
Actually, it did come out.
Do you want to? Is, will there be a mutual item in the past, where we've had common driveway, there had to be some kind of agreement as to.
It's annoying.
Yes. We have a driveway agreement, maintenance agreement.
I'm making your way.
Yep.
Any other members, before I agree on the resolution, showing up, any other questions?
Nancy Clark.
Nancy Clark.
We ask for, we ask for a list of the abutted property owners, that they be indicated under application, has that been done?
Yep, it's on the application, and it's on our plans as well.
Okay. And on December eighth, the conservation commission gave you provisions, were accepted. You have that, and that will be included?
We received email correspondence back and forth from the land here staff, that they, the conservation commission was interested in holding the easement, or maintenance easement, I guess, for, for the proposed open space, which would, which would be owned by the town.
Yes, but they gave you four requirements. The boundary delineated, certified plan showing the skin to the valley is, clean up all the storm damage, fallen trees, signage placement, they are, they are four requirements.
Clean up storm damage, ground. Is there a doubt?
As long as, as long as in the motion, we say compliance with the, with the requirements of the conservation commission, we send them. That's in the resolution.
It's in the resolution, I see that. This is getting taken care of?
Yes.
Okay.
Does it say December eighth today?
The resolution's dated today, within it. But it does date, it does say.
From the conservation commission.
A letter from them, it should say the eighth, we have to remember, I'm saying it is, yes.
December eighth, okay.
Okay, so that's in the resolution. All right, Nancy, anything else?
No, thank you.
Anyone else before we read the resolution?
All right. So the resolution for Lumlot Woods, fourteen Lumlot Road, January nineteen twenty twenty-one, whereas it has its meeting on October the twentieth, twenty twenty. Southbury Planning Commission received an application for approval of subdivision from Kevin. Start check for the property shown on the following record, subdivision map entitled Lumlot Woods, for a correct subdivision map dated October the twelfth, twenty twenty. Prepared by Roy V. Chenny, L. S. Seven, eight, one, eight, four, six, eight, and the cover sheet existing conditions plan, overall site plan, site development plan, grading plan, sedimentation and erosion control plan. Three sheets, detailed, two sheets, sedimentation and erosion control notes, construction notes, and secret details, soil testing results. MLS has travel relations that arch culvert details, two sheets, all prepared by Robin P. Wolf, P. dated eight, ten, twenty twenty, revised though eleven, twenty, twenty twenty. Whereas the commission makes the following findings when required to this application. The application proposes nine lots on thirty-eight point four, thirty-eight point five four acre parcel. Six of the lots, including existing house lot, are proposed to have direct public street access, and three of the lots will be interior lots. One of the interior lots will be served by a private driveway, and the two other interior lots will share a common driveway. Number two, the subdivision proposes six point two five acres of open space. Number three, all lots satisfy the zoning regulation for the R sixty zone with regard to lot size, square, and frontage. Number four, the proposed common driveway meets the requirement of subdivision regulations. Number five, a ten thousand gallon fire tank is proposed. Number six, the Pompano district health district, the department of health has found all proposed lots suitable for onsite sewage disposal on wells. Number eight, the Southbury highway department has revised the plans and has stipulated that no driveway stormwater runoff should drain down to Lumlot, Lumlot Road. Number nine, the inland wetlands commission approved this application on November the tenth, twenty twenty, under application number one, six, six, zero, subject to conditions. Whereas the planning commission finds this application to substantially conform to the subdivision regulations of the town of Southbury. Now therefore, be it resolved that all above applications approved and the chairman or secretary is authorized to endorse the record map at such time as the absentee satisfied the following modifications and administrative requirements. Presentation of one mile on the record map and four prints of all maps and plans are modified and approved for the commission. Presentation of deeds, easements, and related certificate of title in the form acceptable to the planning commission and town council as may be necessary for the following. One, deed of proposed open space to be granted to the town of Southbury for management by the town, by the Southbury Conservation Commission that set out in the minutes of December eighth, twenty twenty, to common driveway maintenance agreement. See the presentation of a bond in the form of the amount acceptable to the planning commission and town council as may be necessary to secure completion and required approvals as proposed for the following. One, a bond of the amount of five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for pins, thirty pins at one hundred and seventy-five dollars per pin, unless it's documented on the mile on map that the pins have been set. Number two, a bond of the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for installation of one, of one ten thousand gallon underground fire protection water storage tank. D, the subdivision is subject to the following conditions and the following notations shall be added to the record mile on map. One, lot six and seven are served by a common driveway, which is subject to common driveway maintenance agreement to be filed on the land records. Two, the subdivision is to be served by a ten thousand gallon underground fire protection water storage tank. No certificates of occupancy will be issued for any dwelling located within the subdivision until the underground fire protection water storage tank is installed to the satisfaction of the fire marshal. A time limit nine days from the date of expiration. The appeal period is, is set during which the time the applicant shall be satisfied, all the above modifications to allow for the signing of the final record mile on map. Can we get a motion to approve this?
So moved, Carmen Andrews.
Second, second Nancy.
Any further, especially before we take a vote? Okay. All right.
Under discussion, under discussion.
I just opened the floor, any, any further discussion?
This is Nancy.
Nancy.
Did I, did I miss it, that you add compliance with the conservation commission, didn't I? Did I miss it?
So we're here, under B one, it says a D for proposed open space to be granted to town Southbury for the management by the Southbury Conservation Commission that set out in the minutes of December eighth, twenty twenty.
That's with the management, but it doesn't address their requirements of the applicant.
Okay, um, let's see what's. Procedural driving needs to be reprocessed, any regulations, Southbury, or? Maybe we have to add one more point there, Deb.
Okay.
We'll put it right there.
In conjunction, please amend the motion to include compliance with the requirements of the conservation commission, dated December eighth, two thousand twenty.
Who signed the motion? Somebody did.
I did, Nancy.
So you have that okay, Deb?
No. Who made the motion?
Harmon, the original motion, and then Nancy, and did you understand her?
No.
Change to be added?
And she's adding to B one, and compliance with?
No, I think she was saying number ten, under, so it was the commission, which would be number ten.
Oh, you're talking about the first page?
That's correct.
Okay. So what did she say, compliance with?
But repeated?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to hear.
Nancy, say your reason.
Repeated?
Yes, please.
Okay, compliance with the requirements of the conservation commission dated December eighth, twenty twenty.
Okay.
Anyone else, are making under discussion? Okay. All in favor, we're approving what's a change we just added. Favor?
I am.
Opposed? To my statements? That's approved, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah.
Welcome.
Time to do business. Plan modification to nine hundred Main Street South, urgent care building, B, exterior ADA elevator.
Keep going.
And I have to see you, full view. Final area. This new.
Going. There you go. There's a bunch of stuff after it. Plans and.
We don't start here.
Yeah.
I had an idea, I'd go in and out.
You got two to sign.
Do you need one these two?
Do you need one, sure, sure. I'm gonna try to shut that off and try and get it.
Uh, being here for the record, my name is Hugh Sullivan. I'm an architect with Bennett Sullivan Associates in Southbury, Connecticut. The application before you this evening pertains to nine hundred Main Street South, and I will go through the eleven by seventeen drawings that I prepared for the application. This is to install an ADA elevator on the exterior of building B, an existing building. It's the building that, I call it, the dock of the box is there. And it's about six feet by eight feet, that orange dot. And what it does, it allows this tenant to rent to medical. So they can have, you know, patients to have the ability to go to the second floor. They don't have that now. If you proceed to the next sheet, A one hundred, the darkened little small rectangle shows you the elevator. The elevator is only accessible from the inside of the building. Yes.
Well, you know, I have to reseat you though first, Alex. We're gonna reseat Alex and, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Please ask during, that's fine for me.
How to say, so first of all, are these, these, all the doors towards the elevator are all ADA compliant?
Um, this is an existing building that was done in the early eighties. Because this building on the sec, the floor we're trying to get to is under three thousand feet, it didn't require an elevator. Still to this day, that code's in place. The problem is, you just can't rent second floors in Southbury with our population, and medical staff will take it, and we need an elevator.
But.
All these exist, all, and this plan right here, Doc, is the existing floor plan.
So it doesn't have to be ADA compliant?
No, it does not.
So the doors leading to the elevator do not have to be?
Uh, all the doors to the elevator, okay, are three foot wide.
Okay.
Yes.
So you didn't change?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And those doors are primarily, even though it's, it's coincidence that they are three feet wide for the elevator, they're truly for the fire marshal and the building official for exiting. So they're the same sized doors. If we continue on drawing A one oh one, you can see the elevator goes from the, really the lower level all the way to what we call the third floor. We'd say the third floor because if you're in the front of the building where the emergency care is, there are three floors total in that building. Correct, that's correct. Now, on the backside of the building, we're showing you, drawing A two hundred, the small, it's essentially, it's a little tower, and we're mimicking the architecture and the siding and the materials of the building, and that will contain the elevator. And the elevator is referred to as a Lula in the code, it's limited use, limited access, and, but it will provide handicap service to the members of our community. Drawing A two oh one shows the side elevation. And there were then, on the last sheet, and I put it here, Southbury Planning Commission wrote me memorandum regarding the review of the work. And we've reviewed it, and we've responded, and we believe, we've responded accordingly, all to the planner's comments, and had no issues with her request. Very small project, but it does require your review of the modification of the site plan.
What, the, the purpose is to get to the, the second, the third floor.
Correct.
Wherever we are on the building, what's up there?
Uh, it used to be offices.
Yes.
Okay, and they moved, it was like a training facility, and they found a, another facility that was larger, and they moved out of there about the end last fall. And the commercial, we're really just saying, look, if you be getting elevator here, we have medical users that won't take the space.
Okay.
So.
Independent of the.
Correct, correct.
Cause I thought that.
Oh, no, 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 no. Independent, you know.
Need extra.
No, 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 it's a complete different, you know, group of physicians.
The only entrance in the front to the building.
Yes.
I think it worked. Yay.
Oh, it's, okay, here we go, good, very nice. Really good.
Well timed.
It took a.
Not even.
Sorry.
Not even later for it, I'll get in trouble for using that. So.
Yeah.
Again, this is, you know, something due to the, you know, the COVID, we tried to get into here in October, and, but if we could, you know, look at this and we could support it, it would really be, you know, great for this facility to be able to do this for this building.
Is that, is that taking up parking space, do you?
No, 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 it's right in the existing corner of the building.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, nothing, good. And furthermore, when this was, when this project was designed and constructed, it used the old parking reg, a one through one fifty. And we know that that kind of parking reg is kind of outdated, so there's a lot more parking on this project than is needed.
Okay.
So that's my presentation to you this evening.
Any questions, anyone else on the commission? Anyone on the virtual commission, anyone?
No.
Oh. We can go ahead and approve it? Yeah. Well, can we get a motion to make an approval, if anyone else have any comments?
Motion to approve, Nancy.
Second?
After that.
Right, time to second, open for discussion, anyone? Anything? All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
It's approved, thank you. Nice to meet you, Brooklyn State Subdivision, Blackberry and Southbury, Green. Request for a 90-day extension for filing the MyLarn app.
Motion to.
Motion to.
I try. Yes, 90-day extension.
No second, if anyone has any comments on it, we're good. All in favor?
Aye.
So I'm sure we'll go back to Dick Confested area.
Abstentions? All right, granted, approved. All right, let's see here. Congrats subdivision, Lot 2, Kelltown Road, request for a second 90-day extension for filing the MyLarn app. Same scenario.
Motion to, motion to grant 90-day extension, request of the.
I'm not gonna do second. Any discussion? All, all in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Approved. All right, number four, discussion regarding lifting the moratorium on the guardrails. Put Bob on this one.
This is the last time we talked about it.
I hope so, right?
Did, did, just, did we already approve this? We talked about. I thought it was. If I understand this correctly, what we've done last meeting was we approved the amendments to our subdivision.
Right.
So now we have all the departments in place.
Okay.
But what we haven't done is lift the moratorium.
Right.
Now that we have everything in place, it would be proper for us to lift the moratorium. We didn't want to do that ahead of time until we had it.
Makes sense, Bob.
So I think all's we need is a motion to.
To lift it.
Lift the moratorium, I believe.
Yeah. Discussion.
Yep, we got it.
Motion to let.
Okay. Alex, your second?
Sure.
Okay, any discussion on this? Everyone okay with lifting the moratorium? Anyone comments? Okay.
Get out.
Ryan, you have a comment?
Huh?
Ryan, you have a comment on the moratorium?
No, no.
Okay, all in favor of lifting the moratorium?
Aye.
Opposed? Was that an idea?
Yes.
Okay. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, pass to lift the moratorium. Thank you, everyone on that. On to other business. Referral from the zoning commission in Southbury Green, PDB number 8, Grieve text, I'm sorry, general text. Amendment and detailed plan modification, landscape area enhanced for seasonal rest around use between buildings D and E. Hugh Sullivan. Ryan, down?
Yes. Okay, so I'll just pass that down.
Thank you.
Again, Hugh Sullivan for the record, Bennett Sullivan Associates Architects. Um, this is a referral from the zoning commission to the planning commission regarding a modification, to the text and the detailed plans. Also with me here this evening is Mark Land for MyMark.
Mark?
Um, probably, maybe some of you remember about three, four years ago, a pizza restaurant called Tuscan Arrows tried to come in.
Yep.
And they couldn't because they didn't have septic capacity.
Yep.
At that time, the ownership contacted MyMark, and they designed a system. They met the state requirements, Mark will review in a couple minutes. And we're, that's been done, and it's about ready to go online. The purpose of that was to be able to have restaurants at Southbury Green.
Remember the whole grease talk and all that?
Correct, just, just. So drawing, the first drawing, SP101, shows you the existing conditions right now at Southbury Green. And in the far right is where the new treatment plant is. Okay? That's been constructed. You, you reviewed that over a year ago and approved it. Now that it's operational, if I could probably go to the next sheet.
101?
Those three areas in red, we'd like to make.
There you go.
Provision for exterior patio for dining. This really kind of came out of the woodwork for all the restaurants in the community for outside dining. And the first one in building E or to the left there would be associated with chips. And building, uh, D, uh, would be for a new restaurant that's gonna be coming to the community and has been approved called Lucas Local, the fish restaurant in Newtown. And their associated restaurant called Mission Salad.
Yep.
The one in the far left, who I called down by the Joseph A Banks building, is perspective. But we, these three red spaces on, depicted on this drawing are the areas where we'd like to be able to have patios in this PDD for the commercial realtors to be able to go out and market the restaurants. The restaurants are willing to come to Southbury, but they want to be able to have outside dining. We couldn't provide that for them before, we, now that we have the septic system. And, um, uh, page C1, I'm not taking any way through your thunder, because I might have think you came here and wanted to have a talk. I know you like to talk. Um. We built some stone walls that depict where the patios are, at building D and E, to building B, and Mark's office to the building section of how they will work. But for this referral, I'd like Mark again just to, like I told him, to bring you all up to speed again about the status of the new septic system, because it's quite unique.
For the record, Mark Land for, uh, 800 Main Street South, York, Southbury, MyMark. I, I gotta say that, you know, that I've had a lot of comments come back to us. Comments usually are, what's that nice little building doing up there on the corner over there? And I mean, uh, you did a great job with, uh, you know, putting that in context with the rest of the, uh, you know, the rest of the, in Southbury Green, which has been, you know, has been, in our mind, has been probably one of the nicest facilities here in town, and many people, folks will tell you about it. Uh, and as Hugh has told you, is that we are all ready to commission. In fact, we've done all the testing, we're seeking to get our final discharge permit from the, from the state, just submit a few documents, and, and of course, the timing couldn't be more perfect than it is now. Uh, that, that system is ready to go online. Because, uh, we do have this new restaurant, I think we're excited about it. It's the huge point, um, you know, the, the restaurant industry itself is, needs this kind of support exterior to, uh, to their regular dining facilities. The plant itself is, uh, it's, it's state of the art. It's really, you can't really see it, it's in the ground most of that, the building is really houses the, uh, some of the mechanical equipment instrumentation, their plant can be run remote, as long as they don't tell me how to do it. I'm fine, because I don't need a phone call. But, uh, we are already in the process of interviewing operators, and we'll select an operator, and a higher-class operator to, to run the plant. And, uh, I think at the end of the day, it's gonna, it's really, Regency is really grateful that they're gonna have this opportunity because the fact that they've been able to market it, uh, they are getting inquiries now. Surprises me, but it's the desire that people want to be at Southbury. And frankly, uh, we've had some good restaurants, and I think this restaurant's gonna be great. And, uh, I'm excited about it. You've done a great job with that building, and I think it's a tribute to, to, to how we think.
Just for your commission, Mark Land's play, because there's a little misinformation in the street. This is not a sewer system that we created connected to the street. This is an onsite septic system.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we remember this. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of folks saying, no, we got, we got issue with the system at all.
Yeah. Direct them to the website, it'll be there.
Exactly.
That's our brief overview. Again, it's, it's pretty simple, and it's just, uh, a text amendment to allow the, uh, patios and the ability to have the, uh, the restaurants to have their exterior dining now that the, um, septic system has been installed.
Okay. So can we?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry, is that fine?
Um, also, um, on there, um, the outside patios, just for your notion, uh. All the patios will have, because the restaurant owners have asked about them, is, um, and they've asked me about having stream lighting out of the patios. And I said, well, you can in Southbury, but in order to do it, you have to abide by Section 11 of the zoning regs. And the first page here is just an email of my review to Regency outlining exactly what Section 11 requires. And so any of the stream lighting that is done will meet the requirements of Section 11 with the LED lights and the color as well. So I just wanted to see that, you know, for the record. It does seem to be one of the aesthetic kind of imageries restaurants like to have, you know, for their exterior paddies. I mean, the patios are seasonal at this point in time.
Is that a nice look? All right, can we? I'm just gonna go to the phone first, the virtual, and back to you next story. Now, anybody in the virtual commission have any questions for Hugh or Mark?
Um, this is Nancy. What does that do to this existing sidewalk? How will you reconsider those?
We're not touching any of the existing sidewalks, Nancy.
Even on D and E, aren't there sidewalks there?
Coming out of the backs of the building?
This is a roadside where the road goes right between the middle of the buildings. And then.
Yes.
The chip is on the right there, and then the sheath over there gets right on the left. So it's right there on the back sides of the buildings.
It's all brass there.
Right, no sidewalks there. Right, no sidewalks. Our biggest concern, I guess, would be just be to make sure that no cars are gonna hit anybody that dining, that's, I get minded away.
No, that's why they have the, uh, stone walls.
Right, right.
They're offset from the curb by 18 inches.
And they'll be, you know, high enough so.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, hey, it's Mike Rosen.
Mike?
Then this, I, I was actually at the green yesterday and noticed the stone walls had been, were upping, actually, um, to, as protector before the, the, so you can start now, it all makes sense to me, by the way, and it looks great, so.
Are there trees on either side of the, those mangos?
Yes, and they're, they're existing trees that, uh, this was brought up before, uh, the zoning commission. Because, uh, you know, um, the, the work that's been out there was done without permitting.
Right.
And, uh, so, you know, uh, the owner was called on the mat correctly. And, um, and when they were doing their work, they, um, they hit some roots they were digging.
Oh, boy.
And they, so, uh, Pat Kearns from the town of Southbury, the arborist.
Yep.
Uh, gave through Jessica and the planning department here methodologies that they have to implement that Mark coordinated, and at this point, if you could indicate what's gonna be done in zoning, would like to adopt this as well, but they wanted us to speak to you about it tonight.
So the trees themselves, where the owner had their own arborist that came out, all of this unfortunately was post immediate installation. So it's sometimes difficult, obviously, to see what went on. Uh, all agree that they're, one, the trees that we have there are pretty rigid, they're pretty substantial, they're deep rooted, but there's not to say that we don't know, you know, how much of the roots that were damaged during the process. So the Regency has made the commitment, uh, that over the next two years, um, one, an arborist will come, you know, deep root feed system for, in the spring and the fall of the next two years. Continue to write and report back to the town as to what's, how things are going.
Okay.
Uh, the only, the only thing is, is, and they also made the commitment, if the trees should falter, they may not falter because of, uh, dining may falter because of a wind or whatever. They have made the commitment that they will remove the trees, the stump, whatever, and replace them with substantial, something three-inch or four-inch caliber trees, something that's established. So they've made that commitment.
Okay.
Um, but there's no concern, and again, I can't remember, those, the trees on.
There are four trees, two on each side.
Um, that, like, heat lamps or anything like that, if the restaurants, the patios have those, they have the heat, heaters.
Correct.
That, they won't really.
The limbs are.
The ones that lie up.
Yeah. And it's, and as the arborist on each side said, if these are maple trees, they'd be dead. They're pin oaks, I mean, they are tough.
Right.
Okay? Um, but the, the deep root feeding is the exact same thing that, if you can recall to 2014, um, that Dolores and the arborist, um, coordinated with your commission and zoning at River View Cinemas for that shag bar kick green that's out there.
Yeah.
As well as those two big sycamores in the back. And they did that for three years, and those trees have held up. They maintain.
Yeah.
But the deep root feeding is extremely important.
Okay.
Mark? On the, on the sewerage? Yeah. Okay, you said that the applications are in, and all the paperwork is in. How long before you think you're gonna get the approval, so that, and will it happen before you start putting these things in? But. So, so the, all, all the septic is, are, is actually all been approved. The only thing we're doing now is a, is what, when you build it, you, like, like here, when you send in zoning wants as builds, before they give you, so to speak, the CEO.
Yes.
We're filing those as builds and all the compliance work with the state, which will then be able to give us the issue to commission, formally commission the plant.
Okay.
Which will, we're anticipating, we're hopeful to be able to do it, I mean, Regency will like to do it by, by March, but I, my, my suspicion of probably sometime later.
Yeah, because that, that, the village has dealt with the, the state governor, and it takes a lot longer than you would just.
Well, depends on who you know. Whoa. Whoa. No, the, the state up there, I've been doing business with them for over 30 years, and, and I'll tell you this, what happened. And it's not the state's fault. There are some really good people that work up at the DEP. And it's not the guy, it's not the big folks that I deal with. It is the chain that goes up that actually stops everything. So typically what will happen, because the state is under the gun, this commissioner wants businesses open. So even if they can't get the formal paperwork all the way through, we will, we usually get a verbal okay to do, allow us to commission the plant. Because I can tell you, I've done some jobs, two years, I still don't have a permit. This job, a formal discharge permit, like you would get from the health department.
Yep.
And it's all because of the internal network and everything else. But regardless, it's, that plan should be running.
Well aware of that.
Yeah, it's just.
Just a continuation of common, only because Kevin Belemeyer is here. Um, if he could say a couple words about how the restaurants would work for this, uh, Southbury Green.
I, I love.
Before that.
Yeah.
Um, my only concern, and I understand, you know, Section 11 of the zoning area, the compliance there.
Yes.
But as you pull under those driveways, those patios are gonna be right there at that intersection.
Yes.
And I think it's going to be easy to get distracted, depending on how the lighting is for driving. You've got direct, straight, left, right. So is there any special?
There are, there, again, there are only two watts, and the hundred eighty will, they are dim. You're not gonna be lighting your table.
Well, as you're in compliance and you've thought that through, I just don't wanna see an issue, a safety issue.
Yeah, yeah, no, if these were over two watts, could be an issue.
And actually, when you pull in, is there a stop for, you, there's no stop for the cove?
No, there isn't.
Can we straight in though?
Yeah.
Maybe put some speed bump, uh, speed bumps?
I, there's a lot of places don't, insurance company don't like them.
Yeah, I'm not worried so much about the speed bumps.
Yeah.
What would happen?
See, I think what's gonna happen probably is these.
People drive faster there, though.
Is you're gonna see tables that might have canopies, like umbrellas.
Yep.
I mean, I, you know, I think this idea of the lighting is just an aesthetic kind of edging perimeter. You are not gonna be able to dine with it light. And it just.
And is there some provision that? And is there some provision that, should it be brighter than what everybody expected or a distraction?
Well, your, your regulations allow your zoning enforcement officer to go out with the light leader and do the foot candle count on the ground.
But sometimes just to do the right thing, let's say the lighting is in compliance, but it's still a distraction.
Yep.
Would there be a provision or some way to add in maybe just a forward facing door? Whether it be through landscaping or screening, just something to minimize that, or is that probably not?
No, I, I think you can do anything to minimize, you know, what I call bailing reflection, you know? And the, the good thing about your regs is at these levels, you, you won't get bailing reflection. Again, because they're LEDs. If they were incandescent light, we would never get this kind of wattage, and we'd never get this kind of low lumen output. So it's really like that of a flashlight bulb.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I'm just curious how they would be suspended, how are you stringing them?
Uh, we don't know that yet. Yeah, and I think this is going to be up to each. I'm more interested in your commission approving the ability for these tenants do it. They may not, okay? But Lucas Local asked, and I said, well, let's get the lighting together, and we'll show, show you what works in the town of Southbury, because what they wanted to bring in didn't work. You know, it was like 800 watts and, you know, it was, you know.
Right.
And some of them even, you know, you know, wanted to know if they could, you know, have any blinking, and I said, no, no, I mean, it's just, you can't read the reg, Section 11, it's pretty strict, and, you know, we abide by it, so. Kevin, anything about restaurants?
Sure.
And, unless Ron's going to go here.
I just, and I know you've already looked into it and everything, but the more I look at this, the cars coming in, cars going across, cars going over there, do you feel confident that we don't have an accident just waiting to happen?
No, I, I do, I do. I've noticed none.
You have a stop sign in both directions, going east and west. The only traffic that's really...
Coming in.
It's coming in, and, and even going out south, I mean, going, going north, there's a stop sign. So there's really, the only traffic that gets to do what they want to do is that that's really coming in.
But that's the fastest moving traffic.
Right.
Issue, right? If they're coming off means they're coming in with the right hand.
They are, but they're also on the, they're going to come in on the right hand side and they take the left, so, you know.
It's during the evening hours, so is it any more distracting than one of our full town Christmas trees that's completely wrapped in bulbs that have more output than these? And colored?
Well, yeah, I don't think it's the lighting that's the issue. I'm not worried about distraction of the lighting so much as people walking to, or just sitting and, you know, we certainly have issues at Denmos and all sorts of places.
The great part about this, though, is they're being faced with a stone wall.
And, and again, part of that stone wall, just so you know, is another layer of review has to do with the liquor commission.
Right.
So, you know, that has to be fenced in.
Right, so they can't walk out of it?
No, you can have one, one, one point of exit, but, yeah, all that's controlled, and all that has their review again with the building official, the fire marshal, the state liquor commission, you know, use other layers of review after planning and zoning.
What goes into the assessment of having a stop sign at that one spot where people...
The traffic engineering.
Okay. And that...
And this has never been the, the situation that's really been under any review with, there's no high traffic incidences here that I recall from, you know, police. There certainly has been down at Brown Road and, you know, the police station, I mean, the post office. But this is a pretty safe, you know, travel way and stacking up is good as well.
If I may?
Sure.
Kevin Belemeyer, Economic Development Director. So, not to keep this too long, as Hugh indicated, of course, the desire for restaurants at Southbury Green is, is prevalent, is real. Actually, before COVID struck us back in February, when I took a tour of the property with the sales manager, the sales agent for it, he indicated then that, you know, it was on their radar that a lot of retailers...
You just have to state what you want to say to them.
Were, may not, you know, be resuming their lease.
And that's it?
When it expires, or they may be downsizing, you know, some of the large chains, so Joss' Bank was not a surprise, for example, you know, they, they, it was on their radar before COVID took place. So at that time, they recognized that what they needed to be able to do with that plaza was have, as they call it, wet uses, you know, restaurants and, and other kinds of businesses that require, you know, had more stuff availability, and that's why, of course, they went forward with this, with this system. Then, of course, we've had this pandemic strike, and the restaurant industry of all industries has hit, you know, arguably or not arguably the harvest. And it has made the outdoor seating, you know, vital. And so luckily in Southbury, we had a lot of restaurants that already had outdoor seating, and they expanded it, and the ones that didn't have it now have it. But anybody building anything new is absolutely going to be looking for it, not only because COVID now, but post-COVID, everybody has recognized the value of it, you know? In the summer, when things were really, really in full swing with outdoor seating, most of the restaurants were about 80% of where they normally would be in a, in a, in a non-COVID year because of the, having the outdoor element. Now that we're in winter, that has dropped to about 20% of where they normally would be. So it's, you know, they're hanging on by a fingernail. But to, to the point of why they're building these patios now is, is projecting what they know they're going to go for. And, and one other caveat in this or detail is, in a typical, again, pre-COVID, they had shared with me, for every space that they had available in the green, they probably had about 30 different prospects that they could go out and try to capture and bring in. Now, because of the effects of COVID-19, that has dropped to about five. So, and I think that reaching out to a local restaurateur like Lucas Local is, is evidence of that. Rather than trying to bring in, say, another chain restaurant with their enormous amount of restrictions of who they'll be next to and all the things that they have in their contract and all that, some of the details that we, you know, talked about that weren't permissible, rather than deal with all that, they thought, let's go with a successful but small local restaurateur. And this fellow's proven himself, he's got two successful restaurants so far, one in Double, one in Newtown. The Newtown one, which is replicating with us, was voted the top seafood restaurant by Connecticut Magazine in Fairfield County for the last, I think, three years run. So we're really excited to, to get him, and I'm really excited that the Green, Regency Center, is, is giving him enough time to see all this go through and, and without, you know, having to pay rent, things like that. He's really given him enough rope to make sure that he gets open by, or, you know, open by spring, so he can really come in with both guns ablazin', so. But I think it's a great opportunity, and, you know, obviously it doubles in the details, so we want to make sure it's all done right.
Any questions for you or for anybody? So we have to make an approval back to the zoning. Nancy, do you have something?
All right, can you access these areas from inside the restaurant and outside?
Yes, you can.
Either?
Yes.
Okay, nothing clear, thank you.
From the outside as well, that's going to be tight, cars going through there.
No, you, you, you have to be able to access it because of the requirements of the liquor commission. You know, you have to be able to exit out of the street, and it exists as it is right now.
It's just, there is a lot of traffic going through there, I can detect. I go there on my way to shop, right?
Yep, yep.
And there's a lot of the traffic there.
Yep.
A lot of opportunity for an accident of some sort.
And that's the reason for the stone walls, you know, that put there, you know, which is, I think, a, a good prevention measure.
You can, I'm looking at this thing, I'm trying to figure out where they're going to exit on the outside.
Again, try and remember, we're in a planning and zoning concept right now. I am not the architect for the details, you know, that go to the fire marshal, the building official, the state. They'll have their requirements as well. I'm just trying to get the concept passed with your commission to refer back to zoning, that yes, you support the idea of exterior patios to restaurants. But I, I can tell you, having done these before, you have, I've had to deal with the building official, fire marshal, and the state of Connecticut regarding a liquor permit, and they'll review all that, and they'll tell us where the exiting will be. We might have two of them. And, you know, they may say that they don't want it near the intersection, they may want it on the opposite side of the intersection, you know, so it's further away. But those are details that will come, that I, I'm not doing at this point in time.
So, now I'm a little confused. So what you're saying is that we're just saying, yeah, we like the concept?
Remember, this, this here is a modification
Right.
of the detailed plans and the text. The text is requesting that patios be allowed as a use at Southbury Green.
That's it.
That's it. The, what we've done now is we've shown where these patios are and shown their scale and their size, and that's the modification, you know, to the PDD.
So the restaurateur will come in with his plan
Correct.
to hear...
Well, he has to, he has to get, you know, his plans have to be reviewed, you know, through zoning or planning, when he does independent fit up.
I understand now. I was, I was confused, I'm sorry.
I mean, I couldn't tell you even, you know, how many tables that went outside, I don't know, you know?
Got no problem with that.
Do, this is Nancy Clark?
Yes.
Do you know what, do you know what some kind of a, an unapprerative reflective marker or something that might calm it down more than our food, our fire concerns?
Something like a marker. Something reflective marker to slow down or people to notice there's something along that lines?
Something unapprerative, that, that's a trap?
Well, we could certainly speak to Regency about doing some kind of what I call, you know, textured surface rather than asphalt in that aisle. I mean, for what it's worth, about three years ago, your commission, we brought before you with a previous owner, some ideas of kind of doing a new cul-de-sac in that area there and doing some stonework that would give some texture to the street and, you know, and I, I think visually it could, you know, slow it down.
So there's a red area is where the patio is supposed to be, the green area next to it, would that be area that you're assuming would be an exit area?
Top or bottom, north or, north or south?
I'm sorry, look at the D and E, I'm sorry, up page two, SPO two?
Yes.
So the two red marks show the patios?
Yes.
Obviously, they can't just walk right on the middle of it, right into the middle of the road.
No, 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 they're going to be dynamic.
Right, so it's going to be toward the end of the green area?
Correct.
Right, so that's kind of what, which is kind of concerned about, what that issue is there for.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we have to make a recommendation back to zoning
Yes.
about what we, what we'd like to see as part of, so what we want to help approve this.
Right.
Based on what he was saying, so these recommendations we're talking about right now need to go devil rain down, we'll get them back to zoning. And then we make approval saying, back to zoning, we see this being okay, but under these conditions. That's what we have to do tonight. Does everybody have more of that? Okay, okay, so if you have anything?
But the, 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 don't for sure, this is Nancy, it's not an approval, it's a concept referral.
Referral, right, this is a referral, right.
Because a couple times, two people there said approval, it's not an approval.
No, right.
It's a concept, okay.
Okay, so does anyone have anything they want to add to that, that been sent back to zoning as part of this before we, we have to give some type of approval on this, or how we want to...
I can move, you want me to motion?
Positive referral.
This is motion to both.
Positive referral, how does that sound? Yeah.
However, with all of the concepts presented on this case.
So, is your motion, I'll second that. Anybody want to add to that?
I'm just as long as, you know, zoning considers safety considerations and can...
Safety considerations, okay.
For vehicle traffic movement.
Yeah, for traffic movement, for sure. Anyone else, anything to add to that? Maybe that's any notes?
And then I just wanted to comment that the state would, the state would confirm whether, like, if you have three high-capacity restaurants, that's on the, the state and your aesthetic system
That's right, that's right.
To be able to handle, right?
So every restaurant that ever comes forward, we have to get a review by the state anyways before it goes to building, so.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Okay, Nina Nancy, anything else to add? You are at the motion.
No, I, I made the motion to include Alex.
Yep, she did that, he's writing it down. Uh, Harrison, anything to add to it?
No.
Guys on that side, no one?
I just have one more question. That area between building D and E, is that two-way traffic or one-way?
Two-way traffic.
Should we consider maybe making one way to lessen?
No, no, because it would violate the state DOT approval they have for the traffic.
See, that's why I think it's really tight in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Really noted. Okay, all in favor of the positive referral back?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nancy, opposed of sentence?
Aye.
Can I just ask who, who did the second?
I did.
Okay.
So, positive referral is done, thank you.
I'm kind of looking forward to those oysters.
All right. Under other business, let's see, number two, dash three, referral from zoning commission petition by Southbury Storage Allosea to amend the zoning regulations, section number 12, in the name of Matt Forty-Eight Thousand, under Plan Development District, for, for home storage area in addition to the existing warehouse storage building, general plans. This is Hugh Sullivan.
Yes, Hugh Sullivan again.
Excellent.
Yeah, I mean, there's, well, everything caught up, you know, since, this, these are all ready to go in October. Many of you know I've been able to work with the planning and zoning commission in Southbury for well over 30 years and have been afforded the opportunity to do many PDDs. This one is very unique, has, it should be for a PDD. From land use, this piece of land has a history that most land parcels don't have in this community. This land parcel is owned R30, where Harrod Village came and didn't have the zoning. Zoning was suspended for about a month, and the owner of this property at that time, Mr. Pullman, applied for a building permit in a town that had no zoning, and he built his factory, he did that math. That's the history of the project. Now, Mr. Pullman was unique in terms of, he coordinated, when I spoke to him years ago, that the library needed a land parcel, and the library is now on an R30 piece of land. And I just don't want you to get focused on the R30, because it's kind of redundant at this point in time. Everything, if I stand in front of the property, everything to the right of it is a B-zone, right up to the corner, the rest color. And because the library went ahead and built their building, you know, most people would say, well, gosh, isn't that a business zone? Well, no, it's not, it's an R30 zone, and it's, trying to find my detail, but it's a project many people don't realize, but with its basement... But with its basement, which is twenty-one thousand three hundred square feet, the library is sixty-five thousand two hundred ninety-one square foot building. Okay, so you have a street there on Poverty Road that's unique in town. And we have this existing factory that converted to a storage facility. Now, Mr. Rob LeBon of LeBon's Grocery Store family, he purchased this site. And he, uh, as my drawings show you on GP100, uh, we have to show you the site clean, uh, which we have. Um, this site is a little over five acres, which is why it's a PDD. I wish it were under five acres, since I do a PDU and come direct to planning, but I can in this case because of its size. Um, drawing GP101 shows you the existing condition. And this has been here forever and many, I still get asked all the time. I don't believe there's any storage available there right now at all. But people have called me, like, when's someone gonna move into that building? It's empty. Well, I mean, so you know, it only gets two to three cars per day, Monday through Friday.
Come there so big.
They have one employee and they may get four, three to five cars on Saturday and Sunday. Saturday being the most popular day. Now, as we were working on this pre-COVID, um, if you can go to drawing GP103, we came up with some concepts about adding to the existing building, um, putting a building behind it so it'll be buffered. And then to the left where those existing trees are between the library, putting up, uh, three five A garages. When COVID came to the area, one of the things that the community was lacking was places for storage. And I'll just get personal as I did when I had to speak to zoning. My daughter had lived in New York City and, uh, was fortunately, did fine, but she was with a, her group of friends in her building. They're all got COVID at the end of February, but her work said, you're working remotely. So she had to move out of New York. Well, I know if I had all suns, the amount of stuff that would have come back, the storage thing would have been, you know, this big. But when the daughter came, oh my God. Um, I ran into this issue with many other people in the community whose children were coming home. And they had stuff and it just wasn't the trunk from college. There were children coming home that had their kids, their grandkids, living at home. I mean, so there was a kind of whole multitude of different types of people that were from Southbury, returned to Southbury. Another thing that we have seen as architects, and I don't understand it, and Ron, you can have, in my opinion, a good background for being from the village. But when you have two thousand five hundred eighty units, give or take four thousand residents or twenty percent of our town, Heritage Village always is a need due to a homeowner, a debt, a probate for storage. I mean, in my opinion, Heritage Village could have a building up there that's fifty thousand square feet just to serve its current residents. So this is a need we feel that we could take care of within the community for our residents because many of us are going outside of the town for storage. Now, when I looked at storage, I really didn't understand what kind of storage there is. Aside from beds or personal property or overflow, um, I didn't understand how many people in this town have very unique antique cars. I, I just, I'm not in that game, okay? And they want clean, heated, vermin-free storage. Like, just, they are, many people in the community want to have storage for excess furniture with our antiques. Again, it's not something, but this is the kind of feedback to get. There are, um, people who've had businesses and they want to have archival storage outside of their home that they can place their work in. Um, so it's a multitude of our residences, of our, uh, of the residents of our community that have supported and have asked for this, which is why Mr. LeBon would like to go forward and create a PDD. Now, this evening, I did ask Kevin to come here to speak to you about this again because he's been instrumental and is aware of this as well in this new use. Um, you know, it's one of these things we talk about, you know, planning and like comprehensive plans here. You know, two of the things that keep coming up to me as an architect from people are, what's the town doing about storage and what are they doing about cemeteries? Well, I mean, again, the storage and the cemeteries are kind of going hand in hand because there's not enough room in any of them anymore. And, um, I'm not out here, but it's one of those things, I know when the comprehensive plan comes up with your commission, it's one of those things that night when you have an open session, I want to raise my hand and talk about it. You know, we should start thinking about, you know, and I realize methods of burial and cremation have changed, you know, over the years and since the regulation been created, but nothing's ever been done to say, well, this might be a good area for it. Um, but storage, cemeteries, these are things that are, should be important to your commission as time goes on. I'm sorry, Kevin, if I could probably just speak about this project?
Sure, and I'll, uh, I prepared remarks on this one, so this, I would be concise and then I'll, I'll hand them out and I'll read it to the record. Distinguished members of the planning commission, tonight's second only to my primary goal of keeping businesses in business in Southbury is the goal of expanding business. Therefore, when Rob LeBon first spoke with me back in two thousand nineteen, about his idea,
About his idea.
Of buying an existing business in town, storehouse, we spoke about the possibilities of expanding the business. Lenders in their process of determining whether to support his acquisition were also interested in this question and approached me and, and it, so it was, it was talked about right from the beginning. The property was determined to be suitable for growth potential and the market, as Mr. Sullivan has indicated, for more storage space of different types was clearly there because the need was there. This was pre-COVID. Now with the unprecedented growth in the real estate market, the need is even greater. The Heritage Village alone, at this time of year typically there's forty to fifty available units. Presently, there are four. As people are in transition, they often need to put their belongings in the storage. We don't want them to look outside of town for that need. The central location of Southbury Storage, flanked by a business district on one side, the library on the other side, just yards from the commercial corridor of Main Street is well-positioned and of sufficient size to accommodate the proposed expansion. As it is larger than five acres, as we've indicated, it's capable of becoming a PDD, which would afford the ability to apply the best practices and standards this town has benefited from under the guidance of the planning commission. Therefore, I would like to state my support of the petition to amend the zoning regulations, section twelve and zoning mapping in order to establish a planned development district for Southbury Self-Storage located at eighty-two Poverty Road. Kevin Beal, American Development Director, Town of Southbury.
Again, my request at this stage of the PDD is for you to support the general plan for the creation of a zoning regulation. Once this zoning regulation is created, the PDD has two components. Right now, this is the general plans and then we would have the detailed plans. And that's when we come back and show you what the buildings look like, finalize the site plan, work with the engineers, you know, to get the site to work and drained. And, uh, so again, this is the creation of the zoning law. After the law is in place, the creation of the PDD, we'll come back to your board and you'll implement the law with the zoning commission for this type of project, which is really needed in the community. Please.
I, I agree that it, that it's needed. And, uh, can we talk about what we see on these, on these plans?
Yes.
We could talk about.
Yes.
It, it appears to me, and I'm looking at the paperwork that I got, that part of this is in a, a, a floodplain district.
It'd be, we are not in it, you know, we've had the, uh, that's in the rear of the property and we're not, uh, we're not dealing with any of those kind of wetlands or, uh, the issues of the, uh, um, anything, you, you could still build a structure in a floodplain as long as it doesn't have mechanical components that can get ruined, like heating systems, plumbing systems. And that, that's why the building in the rear after warehouse storage is, uh, is, is truly a storage facility.
On your map, GP103?
Right, in the back.
I'm looking at this gray building.
No, that's a park, that's a, in the parking area.
Okay, so then it's the orange building next to the parking area.
Correct, that's the warehouse.
That's gonna be in the, gonna be influenced by the floodplain area.
That's correct. And one of the things that would happen in detailed plans, see, I don't have engineers here with me now. They would come with detailed plans. The wetlands, soil, soil scientists would come, uh, the wetland biologists, we'd have to then go to wetlands. We're just trying to get the zoning regulation. So thi- this is not a plan that one goes to build. This was just a concept that I wanted to show you, okay? Will this concept change when it goes to detailed plans? Absolutely. Because the engineers are gonna have feedback, wetlands is gonna have feedback, um, the soil scientists will have feedback. Um, and mind you, this flood boundary is gonna have to get checked again based on elevation. That's from nineteen sixty-eight.
Okay, so once again, the confusion is set in on this old man. Oh, no, no, let me, let me, let me tell you my confusion.
Yes.
What are we, what are we here for?
So, so this is a referral from zoning to get our opinion on, thoughts on modification of this zoning.
So we're, so forget the plan.
Right.
Okay, the only thing we're, we're questioning is the idea of allowing the change in the zoning.
Right.
That's the only thing we're talking about.
It's a petition. They're, they're petitioning to make a PDZ zone on this property.
Like the last time, without proving anything or just approving the concept.
That's correct.
Positive referral back to them and then like, they said they gotta come back, close to all the plans.
Oh, the road ahead.
Yeah.
Is over twelve percent.
Yeah, so that's what we have to do. So really don't spend a lot of time on that stuff. So Kevin, are we comfortable with going back, letting them go back and do the major change?
So I guess I, I do just have a couple of questions because, you know, in, in sending it saying, yes, okay.
We have to add a few things.
I, I'd like to talk a little bit about the different components, um, such as outdoor storage. So what does that even mean?
Outdoor storage might be someone that might have a, an RV that might bring it out and park it. Come back and get it in a week. Leave it there for a month. Uh, might be a boat, I think.
Cause we've had that kind of incident in the village where someone parked the boat.
Well, that's one of the things people have said who've parked boats in the yard and they said, well, if I had a place to store it, I'd bring it.
Yeah.
And, you know, so.
And the other storage place up towards Russian Village, right?
Parks.
Yeah, that, that's just.
That, that's a non-fixed, yeah, so it's, it's, there's no foundation, it's like a module. And, and there are components to this plan, the ones on the left side, but they'll be buffered in between the library that, that are also similar to what, um, he's doing at Martin's.
So there's a lot to this plan, we haven't seen yet in theory.
And, um, just.
I struggle with this a little bit.
Yep.
Because you, you're taking a very clean piece of property and it's gonna get very busy with so many buildings. And all of one side of Poverty Road, you know, it kind of blends right in together, you know, it goes right from the, you know, the old three-year-old rest over there, you call it, eighty-eighth street south, all the way down, it's kind of semi, it's either commercial. You know, and it flows right in. Take the other side of the road though, and then as soon as you clear Bennett Square, now it's all residential. And the quick plans that I saw, I didn't know it could be addressed, but there's no privacy per se, um, for the people across the street.
Well, well, you, I mean, you're, you're, you're correct, but we would anticipate in the detailed plans, for instance, where the white bill, where the orange building is attached to the existing, we would buffer all that with trees just to reduce the width of the building, all right? Um, there are, there are a lot of, you know, I would see landscaping at the back of this property as well. Um, you know, reinforcement of screening will be important.
The south and the east that I think you have to.
Yeah, there have to be some big trees.
Well, you start, I mean, you start and, you know, you recognize it.
It's a unique neighborhood, isn't it?
Well, I mean, everything has changed and it's working its way down. You know, the street, I think the last home is, you know, the Candido Home and, you know, um, you know, that's a business zone as well.
Yep.
So, you know, the goal would be to, uh, you know, to buffer, uh, these and, you know, the, uh, the building that Mr. Pullman built, you know, for its time was an expensive building. You know, with its elevator and he's always maintained it and, you know, that would be the goal here as well.
Okay, so really we're not into those kind of details?
No, that's no.
What else we're doing is the same thing we did with the last one.
Well, yeah, but in, in a concept, you know, a comment like I've just discussed in your referral is that you would hope that, um, when the PDD developed the detailed plans, that measures would be taken with landscaping to screen and buffer, uh, you know, the buildings, you know, from, uh, adjacent properties, uh, from the rear or the side as well as the library. Um, you know, the scale of the, uh, buildings, you know, are, they're only one-story, you know, this is a two-story site. So we've tried to, you know, control the scale and the height of the structures as well.
Now, the proposed new structure, it wouldn't be any taller than the.
No, 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 no.
There'll be one.
Correct.
Right.
I mean, the garages are, are truly residential, you know, and their scale and size, they're just five A's for cars.
They're not even the oversize.
Well, I mean, it'd be twenty-four feet, you know.
No, I mean, as far as, you know, like a.
No, 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 no.
Is this the place where we say, look, we don't want any buildings taller than? And is this the place where we say you've got to have the buffers?
Yes, and you, I think you add, you add it to your commentary that you would, that you would like to see in detailed plans, uh, landscape plans that buffer the new buildings that are being proposed.
And the height?
Yes, correct.
This is just the start. Yeah, we can make these changes of these plans, we can tell them all the time.
Correct, that's correct, as you've done before.
And at what point would the neighborhood get a chance to speak?
At the, at a public hearing.
When that's when they. When they present the plans for the building, that's when the public would get in here and say.
It'll be at zoning next month.
Oh, okay, they'll go to zoning.
Yes.
So what do you draw out?
I have a question, Doug, do you get these?
Yeah, Jessica finished her, uh, review.
I have not. I have not reviewed it.
I know you haven't, nobody has. She just gave it to me at 4:30 and asked me to pass it out.
You're gonna miss the, unless you have another special meeting before zoning.
I mean, it's a lot of paperwork. She went through everything and this is her report.
We just got this at the 11th hour.
I know.
We're not under Nancy. We're not under any time constraint. We could, we could consider that at our next regular meeting.
Hugh says there's a zoning meeting coming up on a public hearing. This is a lot of paperwork.
Well, they're doing a public hearing next month for zoning.
Yeah, so.
So, I mean, if you wanted to continue and wait till next month, you could still.
Yeah, we can do that. Are we ahead of their meeting?
Um, yes. But when's your next meeting?
You're behind the meeting. I need it then in February, the year following week after, you know.
There's no guarantee that they're gonna, I mean, they might continue it.
Understand that.
Yeah.
Understand that.
I mean, I just got this, so.
Yeah, we have to take a review of this.
And I don't think you want me to go through this.
No.
I mean, I'm more than willing to if you want.
That's quite all right. I think we should table it.
That's fine. That's fine.
And then get a quick idea of what.
And I can respond to this in writing as well.
Okay.
Yeah, cause you might have, you might have some more questions too.
I'll second that. Any comments before we take a vote on it? Make sure we table it, anything we add to this. We'll get a review of the new document that was put into us at the 11th hour as well as.
We'll use response.
Yes.
Yeah, no worries, no problem.
And we'll have. Come up with our own recommendations, ideas to put into this recommendation that the zoning, okay?
Not a problem.
Okay, guys.
Anything else?
Motion on the table. So all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? You opposed? Extentions table till next month.
Thank you.
The February 16th, is it? 7 February 205. Thank you. Good night all. 8-24 BOS referral. Request purchase COS land in Hertzshire Estates. MRS. So we saw this, everybody, you look at this, that little couple, there's one piece of property that just the gentleman wants to buy and then there's another one on the other side running along the same river. Did we, everyone looked at this? I know we all did, yeah, kind of.
Yep.
Thoughts, ideas on it? Yeah, I mean, what's the name? Kathy, yes. That was a good idea to have a gentleman come in and propose it to us. We kind of thought that as we were reading through it as well.
It'd be good to have him come in and explain what the hell he's doing.
Yeah, everybody, does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, Nancy, Harmon, everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we put a motion on the table for the right, we have to vote on that or no?
No.
No, we don't? And we'll just have him come in, Deb?
Yeah.
All right, sounds good.
On the 16th, February 16th?
Yes, if you can. Okay, we don't, we don't need the motion, all right, Deb? Okay, thanks Nancy. I don't think we need a court of duty.
Cause it's just, it wasn't anything other than a discussion.
It was just the 8-24, so.
Yeah.
Let's see, what's next here? Number four, the special regarding formation of POCD update subcommittee. Thoughts or ideas on that, anybody? I remember going through this process back in 2012 when we did the last one. And it's a long process, for sure. That book's huge. Between all the photos and then all the language and updating the book with regard to stuff like we talked about tonight, regarding outdoor patios, I mean, there's a lot of things updated to this that we have to kind of gather all up, make sure it all gets in there. So the whole commission participated in that, it wasn't a subcommittee. I think it's something everybody should go through.
Yep.
It's painful, but it's important. Yes, Nancy?
Every other board and commission, that's gonna be in discussions and give us input.
That's right. I was into that, yeah, thank you. And so all the other commissions do their due diligence and send us their ideas and thoughts as well. So I'm opposed to, against having a subcommittee. It's up to you guys, we're all on the same team here, so whatever the committee thinks, I'll go with the majority.
Does a subcommittee allow for, like, outreach and, you know, like, being a point person? But then, or does it, or are you saying that a subcommittee might subvert kind of the collective input?
Kind of do all the legwork, they get all the input and then have to report all back to all of us. I mean, I think we should all do it and it would kind of be helpful. Then everybody has an idea of how the process works, right? And it's really meaningful to understand why this book came to be. Cause, you know, we went through it, we, everyone had their input as to what went into the regulations and then.
Seeing as how you did it before, what is step one?
Step one is we have to, well, we have to just get by this subcommittee thing first, which we don't. And then the RFP did go out, right Deb, for that?
Yeah, the selectmen's office sent it out, yeah.
So that hasn't been, nothing's been done on that yet?
Not that I know of, no.
So that's the first process, I guess. We have to decide, meet the way that we get a certain amount of people and then we meet them? And then we vet them, or is the board of selectmen doing that?
I don't know anything, they haven't told me anything. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, last time we did it, we selected a company out of, I think it was East Hartford.
Not gone through this, so.
I think Traxx or something, they came in and did their presentation and we selected them. They worked with us to do the whole project.
So it's just like, they came in and the streak.
Yes, kind of something like that, yes. Nancy was on the commission vetting too as well.
So they came in and they taught us this is how we would do it with another company. So this is how we would do it with another company, so this is how we.
If I can remember right, that's what happened. But Nancy goes more on it because she was on that. Right Nancy, was that how it was done?
Oh, yeah. There were three of those. And, and what we need is to have a planner in place first. I think we need to get information from those selectmen as to the status of that process now. If the argument out, if we've had responses. And the planning commission, the hiring, so we need to interview the applicants. So it's supposed to be, all that has to be done before we start the update.
And can I ask about, in the hiring of the planner? And you're saying the planning commission is part of that? From the planning commission has been part of that before?
To hire the planner to take the place of Kathy? I don't think we were part of that, we were part of. No, she was saying we interviewed the three companies that were going to do the book. And then Kathy, Nancy wants to have, and I agree with her, we should have a planner in place, like a dollars in place, right, to kind of quarterback. That's important. So we're not there at that point yet, so.
I know, we need it really bad. We're struggling.
How are we doing with that? Are we close or no?
I, nobody gives us any answers.
I mean, I heard it hurt the great find, the first batch wasn't.
That's what I heard.
Wasn't viable, so.
I don't really know.
Yeah, that's what I heard so far.
Okay.
What's the answer on the great line? What?
That's, I guess, the first bunch of, I guess.
First batch wasn't good.
Still waiting for more, I guess.
They didn't have everything that was needed. Yeah.
If anybody gets back to board of selectmen, several other towns are using independent contractors. So we don't hire a planner, but they can be hired to facilitate the update of POCD. So that's another option.
Is Mike still on the call?
I am.
Hi, Mike.
Yeah, Mike, can you give any assistance, any information on how this process is moving along?
We haven't had any meaningful discussions about it. But I would say, certainly, I can't speak for the board, I'd say I'm always, you know, I certainly would be open to the concept of bringing in a third-party consultant's support to help us on this.
Okay.
I don't know. Yeah, it's a, you know, it's a normal business practice. A municipality would, you know, make sense in some third-party.
And how would we relate to the board of selectmen that that's, you know, that we need to start moving on this POCD and.
I, I mean, I, I would have, I would have to try to reach out to the first selectmen to just have a conversation to start, how they want to do it together, which you can go in the conference. It should be a partnership, in my opinion.
Are you, are you on the liaison, Mike?
I am, that's why I'm here.
Well, I'm sure, so maybe you could facilitate that.
Yeah, certainly, I mean, certainly, on Thursday, I'll mention it for my update that Richard's been reaching out.
Yeah, if you want to go over that, that's fine. That works. Oh, so I'll wait to hear from you then, Mike, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, I'll let Jeff know that it came up in the meeting and that, you know, my recommendation was that you reach out and you and Jeff connect and, you know, put together a plan for the best process for making it happen and we refer.
Okay.
Maybe after Thursday.
Sure. After Thursday. Okay, sounds good. Everyone was comfortable with that? We can move on to the next? Okay, cool. All right, thank you, Mike.
But I can just go back to the POCD, just to say, I mean, this took a year, year and a half.
It took us a while. Right Nancy, it was almost a year before we were done?
Over a year, yeah.
The only reason why is because it's so busy with what, see, compared to tonight's agenda and still having to do the, it's a lot of work, right? So the meetings last a long time. So it's a lot of extra work, but it's gotta get done at some point. And then we throw special meetings in there, obviously, an extra meeting, a month to get it done, so.
You could plan on a couple of years, that's why it's done every 10 years.
Yeah, so it takes a while. So that's how we start the process. Let's see, so if everyone's good with that, we'll jump to the next one. Members' reports, anybody?
I have one from council of government at the last meeting. I requested that we, we have a liaison person or a representative of Southbury to go to the council of government meeting. He pulled back to us and we haven't heard anything in a year. And so I asked for Kathy at that point to find out what's set. Did you hear anything?
Deb's, I didn't hear anything?
Nope.
Anybody else?
Can we try that again?
Uh, Chris, can you hear anything?
Can we try that again? Mike, that person was appointed by the first selectman or the board of selectmen.
Uh, Mike, maybe, Mike, that person was, um, appointed by the first select or the, or the board of selectmen, maybe we need somebody else, but maybe you could bring it up, we haven't heard anything.
Can you say that more confidently, Nancy, because I, you was opening it now.
Yes, we have, every town has a representative to the Norbituck Valley Council of Government.
Yeah.
They're all there. I did it for years, I don't do it anymore, and then they come back to the planning commission and report each one.
Okay.
Sometimes, sometimes they need every other month, I think they only now need every other month, but there's so much available for us there, that we don't have to, to go through the process, it's already there, they.
Yeah, I'll find, I, I know that, I know that, um, I know that, um, with Jeff and, and Jeff and the first, with Campbell and Select, which have been attending, Cobb, I don't know the last committed, but I can ask a question about, you know, who is representing us at Cobb, it had, it had been, I know that Select person looked for a while in Jeff's place.
Yeah, we haven't gotten any reports in a year.
They go every year.
And that part I'm not rough about, but I know that we've gotten some reports about those meetings, but they should be briefed, I think, well.
Okay, so that's their call.
The second thing is, the, Cobb just put out this absolutely wonderful, in December of two thousand and twenty, regional profile, it's eighty-five pages in a teller, and it's got the details of all the status of specific areas, of Southbury, and all the surrounding towns, it's wonderful. I got a copy, and I would like to have every member of the commission get a copy, so either we have staff order it from Cobb, or we print it ourselves, but it's wonderful. It's such a source of information.
What are you referring to, Nancy?
It's called the Norbituck Valley Regional Profile, two thousand and twenty. December two thousand and twenty, so it has population, it has income, it has housing, it has, um, transportation, it has, all, all the statistics been there, very well laid out.
Can, can we, can we order a book?
Do we have access to that, Deb, yeah?
Yes, absolutely, we do.
It's probably on, online, I would imagine, on their website.
And it's just such a fund of information.
On their website.
Yeah, and I've picked up a PDF of it, so I can. Oh, cool. Send it around to everybody.
Oh, really?
Excellent, thank you. All right, anyone else on member reports?
I got, I don't know reports, but I, I'd just like a question, uh, affirmative action, you know, that's my hot button topic.
Okay.
Not affirmative action, affordable housing.
Yeah.
That's my hot.
I know what you meant.
That's my hot, that's my, affordable housing's my hot button topic, and, and what I've read from reports of what's going on in the legislature in Hartford, is that they're going to be pushing on communities that don't meet the ten percent guidelines in eight thirty G. So, we ought to be thinking about affirmative, uh, for, that's affordable housing. We've already had two cases where, where the developer come in and decided where they were going to put it. If we don't have a plan, the, the developers will develop a plan, they'll put it wherever they want to put it, and right now, with the tender in Hartford, if you appeal it, you're going to lose, and the developer's going to put it where he wants to put it. So, I think we have to, us, the, the board, we have to pressure the board of selectmen to, to start working towards an affordable housing plan, because right now, we're at one point four two percent of the population, of the housing population is affordable, and, and that's obscene, really.
I, I thought that our, I'm sorry. I thought that our, the last time we talked about this, that the, the thought was part of the, the conservation plan, the C O P D was going to.
It has to be, I've read up on it, and I've got to make a presentation sooner or later before the board of selectmen, it has to be a separate plan.
Oh, yeah.
On how you're going to get to it. Then you can refer to that in the, the plan of conservation and development.
But I also thought we were talking about it kind of being in concert, that these, these, I mean, these things don't exist separately, even though they're in different reports, that it's all one town, and we need to look at it from.
Yes, but, but there has to be, there has to be a, a, an organization somewhere that's trying to develop a plan for affordable housing. You can get a moratorium, but you have to have better than two percent of the population in affordable housing, and, and you have to present a plan for how you're going to get to the ten percent. Now, that plan, that how you're going to get to the ten percent, is not going to be outlined in, in, in the plan of development. It will be referred to in the plan of development, but it's, it has to be separate. You know what I'm saying?
I know, can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, this is another thing we could hire sort of a planning consultant for, it, it's easily, and the, the surrounding towns are all coming up with their plans, we could group to reinvent the wheel, there's a lot of information out there already, we can already vet, get copies of theirs, that'd be no cost, and then hi, we have a budget, we can hire a consultant to draft one based on, and then collect this information for us. I mean, that, yes, and you're right, Ron, it's, it's a separate plan, it can be incorporated in the P O C D, but we don't want to wait another two years.
And, and really, that's, that's the purview to setting up, the, the board of selectmen has to set up the committee. That's what, that's the, that's the, that's the way they've done it in other towns.
They have, but we can request to have a third party planning planner, certified planner, and maybe use one that's been working in all these other towns, and come up with these plans, they're, it's not new, they're all doing it.
Richard?
Yes.
Mike Rosen?
Mike Rosen.
Thanks. Um, Ron, you know, this was, and I, and I, Ron, that was you, right?
Yes, yes.
I would, I would, you know, one thing is that for months now, months and months, the board of selectmen has been, um, had, we've been talking, it just hasn't been on our agenda, of having the strategic plan commission come back to us, because affordable housing is top on their list, um, the regiment nations. I think there needs to be some coordination between these two commissions, um, to finally get some traction to move this forward. Again, I can't speak for the entire board, but I can speak for myself, that I can, I opt that, that I believe that affordable housing has to be amongst the priorities of, of the town, uh, not only for the legal reasons, but because it's also, the need is so great. So, I would, um, you know, I would certainly, um, Ron, also recommend that not only do you guys potentially reach out to the first selectmen on this, but reach out to John Montalio, um, from, from the strategic plan commission, and perhaps together, put together a, um, you know, a, um, a joint, um, request, to get the board to, to move this forward.
Mike, I.
Just, just to reinforce, we absolutely, we absolutely need a professional who's done this before, and who can get, we can gather all the information, we can't have two different commissions go round and round and round. We need, we need a consultant.
Can, can I just interject? Kat Smith and I have a proposal, we have, we have sent copies of everything we had to the board of selectmen, we are waiting to make a proposal to the board of selectmen. I've talked to, uh, George, who's, who's sits with us, George Bertram, who sits with us, and he supposedly went to the board of selectmen. We're asking that somewhere along the line, you put us on the agenda, so that we can, we can have our presentations sent forward. We, we have recommendations, we, we have, we have background statistics, all of that has already been done, we've been researching this since two thousand and eighteen.
Ron, the only person who makes the agenda at the first selection.
Well, can somebody ask this first?
I will, I will, I will email him, I will email him tonight after this, saying that you are urgently requesting to get on the agenda.
That's all, and, and, you know what, do me a favor, don't, don't bypass George Bertram, because he's supposed to be doing that, so maybe.
I'll copy him, I can do, I can copy two selectmen to this quorum, no problem.
Perfect, okay, thank you very much.
I'll do it right now, I'll copy you, Ron, and I'll copy you, Richard, just say, Ron.
Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else on member reports, Alex, Bob, anything?
Uh, Rupak meets tomorrow night. Something for the other business, I don't see that on the agenda, so, whatever that gets to there.
Well, with this, that is other business, so if you want to bring up, now your member of reports, it's fine.
Just, as a side note, I did drive by, um, our new fueling station the other night, and, uh, I don't know if it's part of a construction phase, or whether this is a permanent aspect of it, but it did seem very bright. I don't know, I'm not a, a lighting guru, so, um.
You can have your measure.
No, I don't, I don't have a photometer or anything like that, but I would ask that if we could have, um.
A review of it?
A review, just to make sure that it isn't compliance, because it did seem awfully bright.
Okay.
So, I just don't know if it's following our recommendations that we put forth.
Okay.
And also, the gate is open all the time, every time I drive by, I thought it was supposed to be closed in the next day, particularly, it's open all the time.
Okay. So, the light and the gate, sound good, Deb?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, everybody drive by, that'll help.
I, 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 all the time, most of the time, it's closed.
Yeah.
I was, I, I didn't notice it.
Because the light's gate is not finalized, um, because we've been told, you know, my, uh, town employees, that is, I, I think, you know, that I work twenty hours every six months now. But we were notified that, uh, that somehow the access way to get in with our, with the P F O P thing is going to change, I haven't even been there yet officially to fuel, um, but they tell me right now, it's kind of a hassle, you have to park and get out and walk up and open up the gate somehow, get back in your car, pull forward, that that's going to change, so, right, the gate status should be changing.
Okay. Okay, cool. All right, thank you, everybody, on that, uh, anyone else? Question, Bob? Uh, let's see, we have to, um, next, October the twentieth, let's see who was here, we were all here except for. All right, anyone to change anything, or add to minutes before we go to a motion to approve them, October twenty, twenty twenty. I'll assume the silence means we're good. All in favor to approve the minutes, or need a motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Ron, count the seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Extentions?
I abstained, because I was not.
Right, yep, thank you, Alex. Approved? Let's see. Uh, bills, okay, let's see what we got left here. Correspondence, we have correspondence? Oh, correspondence. Sorry?
We don't have any.
We don't have any. The only one that was, was that last memo that was from, wasn't really correspondent, that's it. All right, so, Bill, thank you, Bob, Bill, so we have two, one bill, all prepared, so I thought we approved back in October, the date said October.
Nope.
And Malone and McWilliams again. Oh, three of them? Two of them, all right, two of them. What do you have to go through, want to just, anybody have any comments or questions on?
I thought we approved them in the past, but apparently we didn't, so.
Nope. These are new.
Okay, so all in favor, any motion to approve the, the bills?
So moved.
Ron, count the second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions? All right, all approved, so then we'll make sure that they, everyone gets taken care of, or over to finance, so they can approve them and pay them.
Yeah, you got to sign them.
Okay, so while we do it for our lead.
Okay.
Okay, let's see, last but not least, okay, election officers.
No.
We nominate, uh, Rich Tino for chairman.
We do it every year.
What's that, Nancy, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I make a nomination for Rich Tino for chairman.
Slow down. I know it is. Okay, so the second was Alex?
I did second, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, ma.
That's okay, Alex, I've gotten more than enough second.
All, all in favor for, I guess, myself, the vice chairman?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye, thank you. Thank you. Opposed? Extentions? Okay, thank you. Make a recommendation for vice president, vice chairman? Vice president.
Vice president.
I recommend, um, Nancy Clark, would you like to be vice chairman?
Okay, we need a secretary too, then, okay.
I recommend a motion for Nancy.
Second that.
Alex, second it. All in favor for Nancy Clark for vice chairman? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right. Perfect. Anyone else?
Motion for Alex.
What's that?
Motion for Alex, the secretary.
I was just going to say that myself. Okay, that's up to you, I would second that motion if that's the case.
Can we discuss, can I have a description of what it entails?
Sure, she wants to drop description of what it entails. This is easy, actually, easy, since you've been secretary, would you like to just give Alex a quick overview?
Yeah, there's very little to do, sometimes you sign off on various applications, and there's, it's not traditional, it's not a secretary, a secretary, or anything like that, it's very low contact.
The legal notices, legal notices that go in the paper, your name's on the legal notice. But that's, it's not a big deal.
So, the motion is on the table, um, second motion on the table, so, Alex, you're okay with this?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? All right, all officers are set. I guess we're to the end here, everybody, right? Make a motion to.
I make a motion, Richard.
I'll second it, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Michael.